This is a meeting of the Harwich Planning Board on Tuesday, October 23rd at 6:30. So I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd also like to notify anyone who would like to record or tape. As required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting, and we are. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the Chair. Is there anybody that's recording anything today? Okay. So we have a full agenda, and I've been informed that we need to be out of here by 7:50 at the latest.
I go nine.
Oh, I will be.
So, go Sox. No, the 27-time world champions are playing golf. So, public hearing, I'd like to start with first.
You don't have to read this entire one into because you've already opened it.
We've done it, we've done this.
Just announce the title.
Okay, PB 2018-33, heirs of Mark Nickerson and Robyn's Family Trust.
Good evening. For the record, Thad Eldridge, East Southeast. There were three items outstanding that we've provided, and otherwise we're ready to move forward.
What are the three items, just for the record, that you provided?
We had the Board of Health EIR and definitive subdivision approval. Both of those had been approved by vote at the previous meeting. A draft of the Homeowners Association documents. In particular, they have to police themselves so that we don't overburden the Conservation Commission. And the NHESP ruling on the open space, that's come back with approval along with the scientific research permit and other permits that are needed. I have spoken with the town engineer, which was a side note, because he had concerns about the drainage. The drainage is low in the ground, or deep in the ground, because we're collecting water from the intersection and bringing it all the way back to dispose of here. Otherwise, we're ready to go.
Okay. So are there any comments from the board? Anyone like to, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if we could have the staff comments before we go to you, comments from the board?
Any staff comments?
Yes, sir. The surveyor has provided an area, just kind of reiterating some of what we discussed last time, so areas of the piling of snow during removal. The shared driveways have been designed to allow for this area. These can be seen on Detail Two of Sheet One of Seven. There was a typo in this next one. The open space will be protected by Homeowners Association and Conservation Commission. The planning board will need to see these documents, and we have received the Homeowners Association, however, the acceptance by the Conservation Commission for the protection of the open space, that would need to be submitted prior to the release of covenant or other performance guarantee. In the event they, that a release of covenant is granted and they submit a bond or some other surety, then it would be when that, before that was released. All Board of Health conditions will be need to noted on the endorsement, on the plan prior to endorsement, and that will be done. The $3,000 in lieu of construction of the sidewalk will need to be provided. It's recommended this be submitted prior to or at the time of endorsement. Sometimes that one kind of gets lost in the shuffle, so I would suggest that you do do that prior to endorsement, assuming that you are going to approve it. The applicant is also seeking three, four approvals. One is the open space residential development, which is a special permit. It does require five board members voting in the affirmative. The shared driveway is a special permit for alternative accident, alternative access. That's also requires an affirmative vote of five members. The panhandle lot, and also the definitive subdivision plan, which only takes a majority of the board, as does the panhandle lot. It is the opinion of staff that the waivers are reasonable, and the recommended road name is Blossom Circle.
Yep. Anything else?
Just in the other staff comments that the Health Department and the Board of Health did review, the plan and the EIR, and they were satisfied, and there are certain conditions that will have to be noted on the plan. As Mr. Eldridge noted, they, he did speak with the town engineer regarding the drainage, so the town engineer is, is fine with that at this point. And at this time, there really are no other comments that you haven't heard already from other town departments or myself.
Any comments from the board? Anyone?
I have none.
Jim?
No comments.
David?
Nothing for me.
Okay.
I think the record should reflect that we, this is the second night of hearing on this matter.
Yes.
That we heard a lot of other material the first time around.
Yep. Is there anything?
And Mary is not eligible to vote on this because she was not at the meeting on the 11th of September.
Are there any additional or new comments from the public? Anyone?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Could I ask one question? The $3,000 in lieu of the sidewalk at the time of the plan endorsement, it locks us into the plan. My client's intention is to sell the property in total, and if a developer were to go in and redefine the subdivision, then what would happen? Why is the $3,000?
Give them back his $3,000.
Actually, that could be done because that goes into a special fund.
Okay.
So there should not be, it's not an escrow, it's a different fund, so that could be arranged. Or if, in the future, if there's a different division of land, you know, and they don't want to build the sidewalk, you know, then there may be more. So, yeah, there are ways to address that.
Question, if, if you know, you may not, and I wouldn't be surprised. You and I were at a meeting earlier.
Yes.
And somebody asked me about the sidewalk fund. The planning board has a sidewalk fund.
The town has a sidewalk fund, the town does, not the planning board itself, but the town does have a sidewalk fund that when it is in the opinion of this board that a sidewalk really isn't necessary or appropriate for a particular subdivision like this, because it's a sidewalk that's like 50 feet long, that it would be better utilized in the sidewalk fund.
So his $3,000 is going to go in the sidewalk fund?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right. Just for the rest of you, one of the things we were doing at this previous meeting was talking about the sidewalk that's going to run from Harwich Port Center all the way to Sacquetucket. And so we, and the town administrator is concerned that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts may not pay for all of that, is it?
Yeah.
There's going to be issues, so we, we could be asked to tap the sidewalk fund, is what I'm trying to say.
The sidewalk fund doesn't have enough in it, I don't think.
No, not a lot.
It does not have a lot in it. The other thing, however, the board.
It's not going to be able to go for more.
I understand.
The board can make as, as one of the items within the covenant that the $3,000 has to be paid prior to the release of covenant. So you can do it either way, really, you know, however you feel comfortable, you know, how and when you, you receive those funds.
Will you close? Move to close?
Actually, you already had a motion and a second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to the motion to close the public hearing, and we were in discussion, so, but we have not taken a vote yet.
Okay. Take a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
One abstention.
One abstention. Duly noted.
Mr. Chairman, vote, the findings of fact for the open space residential development, move to adopt and approve the following findings of fact related to the open space residential development special permit. One, the open space residential development is preferable to a conventional residential subdivision. Two, the open space residential development is superior in design to a conventional subdivision. Three, open space has been provided and generally conforms to the design requirements. Four, there are no wetlands or water bodies on the property. Five, the proposed street has been aligned to provide vehicular access to each house in a reasonable and economic manner. Six, lots and streets have been located to avoid or minimize adverse impacts on open space, and EH, NHESP estimated priority habitat, and to provide views of and access to the open space for all home sites. Seven, all lots meet the applicable dimensional requirements.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve a waiver from the open space requirement to.
Mary, you're doing all extensions.
Yep.
Yep.
Sorry. Sorry, Joe.
That's okay. Motion to approve a waiver from the open space requirement pursuant to Section 325-51E as follows. One, 50-foot buffer requirements, Section 325-51ED 4D. The property to the south is owned by owners unknown. The applicant's request to minimize or eliminate the 50-foot buffer to this parcel only. A buffer to the developed lots will be maintained. Two, due to the fact that the property is located within the NHESP estimated priority habitat for Eastern Box Turtles, and that future development in the area is better suited along Echo Woods Road, and as such, the creation of flexible open space would allow for future development, provided equal or better open spaces provided and approved by the planning board and NHESP.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstention.
Abstention.
Motion to grant a special permit with waivers, with waivers to the heirs of Mark Nickerson et al. and Robyn's Family Trust as owners for a special permit, 325-51E, open space residential development, for a five-lot cluster subdivision for property located at the end of Periwinkle Way, also known as Zero Chatham Road, map 34, parcel N7 and N10, in the R-R zoning district. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirement and criteria for approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention.
Okay, now do we need the alternative?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
Move to adopt and approve the following findings of fact related to the alternative access special permit. One, the alternate access proposal, proposed, the alternate access proposed is superior to the access along the frontage. Two, the proposed alternate access will be cleared to a minimum of 16 feet in width and 16 feet in height. Three, the lot providing the easement will have the required legal frontage for the zoning district. Four, the plan provides for efficient and safe disposal of surface water. Five, the use is consistent with the zoning code and will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Six, the requested waivers will not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of this bylaw, and that such waiver may be granted without substantial detriment to the neighborhood or overall public good. And seven, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any against? One abstention.
Motion to approve the alternate access, alternative access special permit pursuant to 325-18P for the proposed shared access for Lot Three of the proposed subdivision based on the aforementioned findings of fact, and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval with the following conditions. One, a driveway easement location plan naming each lot affected shall be prepared and approved by the planning board, Plan Department or the planning board. The approved plan shall be recorded at the possible county registry of deeds.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Now, do we need to do the panhandles, too?
Yes, sir, you do.
Yep, we do.
Thank you.
These are all votes.
Motion to adopt and approve the following findings of fact related to the request for panhandle lots. One, lot frontage and lot width within the panhandle portion is 25 feet wide, which is allowable under an open space village development. Two, the length of the panhandle portion of a lot is less than 300 feet. Three, suitable access by a driveway to such lot is provided within the panhandle, and the access is wide enough and otherwise satisfactory for a driveway. Four, all panhandle lots meet the shape number requirements. Five, no panhandle portion of any lot is contiguous to another panhandle portion of a lot at the street line.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention.
Motion to approve, adopt and approve the following findings of fact relating to the definitive subdivision. One, said subdivision for single-family homes is permitted use in the underlying R-R and the Water Resources District. Two, said subdivision does not adversely affect the neighborhood. Three, all lots demonstrate compliance with minimal dimension requirements for frontage area in shape. Four, excuse me, Board of Health requirements shall be met. Five, proposed road construction satisfy all requirements, including the grade of the road pursuant to 400-12 through 14-400, Appendix One, the rational method of drainage design, and Appendix Two, Tables One through Four.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstention.
Abstentions? One?
Motion to approve the following waivers from the subdivision rules and regulations pursuant to 400, Article Two. One, sidewalks, Section 400-14M, Print One, based on the finding that the location of the subdivision and the rural nature of the subdivision would not benefit from the construction of a sidewalk as part of the subdivision.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention.
Continue.
You'd be going for B, as in boy.
Yep.
Move to approve with conditions, PB 2018-33, heirs of Mark Nickerson et al. and Robyn's Family Trust as owners care of East Southeast LLC with waivers for a five-lot cluster definitive subdivision plan pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Paragraph 400, Article Two, and MGL, Chapter 41, Section 81K through GG, as shown on a plan entitled definitive subdivision plan, heirs of Mark Nickerson et al. dated 7/17/2018 and revised 8/18/2018, Sheets One through Seven, prepared by East Southeast LLC. Property is located at the end of Periwinkle Way, also known as Zero Chatham Road, map 34, parcel N7 and N10, in the R-R zoning district. Following conditions are imposed and required to be submitted prior to endorsement of the plan and covenant. One, the Board of Health conditions shall be noted on the definition plan, Sheet One. Two, the road shall be known as Blossom Circle, and shall be changed on the plan prior to endorsement. Three, this decision, following the expiration of the 20-day appeal period, shall be recorded at the possible county registry of deeds with a copy returned to the town clerk and the planning board for the case file. Four, a standard planning board agreement and covenant shall be executed and recorded at the possible county registry of deeds with a copy returned to the town clerk and the planning board for the same, for the case file. Five, the Homeowners Association document and the agreement with the Harwich Conservation Commission to oversee the open space shall be recorded at the possible registry of deeds, and a copy shall be returned to the town clerk and the planning board for case file.
Would you entertain, including prior to the release of covenant and/or other performance guarantee?
Yes, I would.
So amended? No objection. Second.
The applicant shall follow all requirements and inspections for the construction of the way. And seven, a fee in the amount of $3,000 in lieu of construction of the sidewalks shall be submitted to the planning board prior to or at the time of planning board endorsement.
Second, as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed?
I think that completes.
One abstention.
One abstention.
I think that completes.
That is it.
That's it.
That was a lot. I think that was one of the longest decisions I've ever.
Do have a copy.
Okay. Thank you much, Ray. Thank you.
Okay, so next we have PB 2018-35, Christopher and Lisa Barton.
This you do need to read into the record, sir.
As owners, care of Brendan Launey, Cape Associates representative, seeks approval of a used special permit with waivers for an accessory structure with bedrooms pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, 325-13, 325 Attachment One, Paragraph One, Line One, Point B, and Section 325-51. The proposal seeks to construct a detached two-story garage with a bedroom above in the same footprint as the existing garage. The property is located at 11 River Pine Circle, map 11, parcel P3-15, in the RL zoning district.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Brendan Launey from Cape Associates, representing Chris and Lisa Barton for.
Brendan, just so you know.
Yes.
I have prepared some slides.
Oh, great, thanks.
For folks to see.
Yeah, and thank you for the staff report, too. That was very helpful to have it all in one, two pages here, so thank you for that. So the, the project is, there's an existing garage on site. The Bartons are looking to demo the existing garage and build, this is a rendering right here, and they want to add a second floor, and that second floor would consist of an open space with a bathroom, so ultimately a bedroom. We've been in front of conservation already, health has, you can see in the, in the staff report, the Health Department has approved based on the septic system that exists. And we do have a building permit on Ray's desk waiting for approval. And the space above right now is just deemed storage, but they would like to convert it to a bedroom.
Any, anything else? Good?
I think that's it, that's really the gist of it.
Comments?
This is actually very straightforward. Water Department had no concerns, we received no comments from the Building Department. They are awaiting approval from this board to move forward with the building permit. The building, the Police Department, from a law enforcement and criminal justice standpoint, they had no issue with the project. Fire Department had no concerns. Conservation must follow plans and order conditions approved by the Conservation Commission, Any changes? Will need additional conservation review. Health Department, the septic system was installed in 2015 and designed for a total six bedrooms. The floor plan reflects only five actual bedrooms in the main house, therefore, the current septic system can accommodate one additional bedroom above the garage. Disposal system, construction permit will be required to connect the garage sewer line to the existing septic system, however, the floor plan must remain the same, as is depicted on the plans drawn by Cape Associates, Inc., dated 01/09/2018. Should the floor plan change, and this will be used as an accessory apartment with kitchen, a two-compartment septic tank or two tanks in series will be required by, per Title V regulations. A fully compliant septic system will be required. No variances from Title V or local regulations will be granted. A walkthrough by the Board of Health, by the Health Department will be required prior to certificate of occupancy issuance. In engineering, the site plan needs to be stamped. We did receive a stamped plan today by a professional land surveyor, so that's been satisfied. Although it says there's an item number one under my comments, obviously there isn't. Two, although the applicants have only requested a waiver from the requirements to submit drainage calculation, it has become practice that waivers for these types of applications are standard and include any and all commercial and residential requirements of the bylaw that are not applicable to this type of regulation. Many of the requirements, as you know, are really designed for commercial or major residential projects, not for these smaller special permits. At this time, it would appear that all requirements have been met regarding this application.
Okay. Any comments by the planning board? Mr. McFarlane?
Sean, with respect to these various alternatives that the Health Department talks about.
Yes.
I mean, they're like, they'd have to come back to us.
They're informational only, they're actually more for the applicant to let them know that, okay, you're only getting a bedroom right now. If in the future you choose to add a kitchen, you need to do this much more.
But they'd have to do some other things.
They'd have to do a number of things. They'd have to come back to this board for a special permit. They'd have to abide by Board of Health regulations.
That was my point.
Okay. Any other comment? Mary?
For me, it was just a clarification, it's the difference between just adding a bedroom and not an accessory apartment.
Exactly.
Any, any further comments from the planning board? Any public comments? Anyone? We're good there.
Move to close.
Move to close. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
None.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve the requirements to submit drainage calculations and waivers of any and all commercial or residential requirements of the bylaw that are not applicable to this petition.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we're good to go.
Motion to adopt the following findings of fact. One, the property is located within the R1 zoning district. Two, the use is consistent with the zoning code and will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Three, the site is in appropriate location for such use. Four, the accessory structure will not contain a stove and therefore is not a kitchen, and is not an accessory apartment, as described in 325-2. Word usage and definitions, dwelling, single-family with accessory apartment. The proposed parking area will provide sufficient off-street parking, which meets the minimum requirements of the town code, and as such, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
Second, but I would also like to make a technical amendment to Joe's motion. This in fact, number one, it is my, with my hearing that Joe said the R1 zoning district should have been RL.
RL.
So I'd just like to make that amendment to your motion.
You should accept the amendment.
Okay, and with that, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
None.
Okay, all right.
Motion to approve with conditions the used special permit and waivers for PB 2018-35, Christopher and Lisa Barton as owners for an accessory structure with bedroom pursuant to the Code of Town of Harwich, 325-13, 325 Attachment One, Paragraph I, Line One B, 325-14Q, and 325-51, for the construction of a detached two-story garage with a bedroom above in the same footprint as the existing garage for property located at 11 River Pine Circle, map 11, parcel P3-15, in the R-L zoning district. The approval is based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich with the above findings and following conditions. One, the accessory structure is not an accessory apartment pursuant to 325-2, word usage and definitions, quote, dwelling, single-family with accessory apartment, unquote, and shall not contain a kitchen. Two, all Board of Health and Conservation Commissioner requirements shall be met. Three, an update plan prepared by a professional land surveyor must be submitted to the planning board prior to the issuance of a building permit.
That's already been submitted, so if you want to.
Strike three.
Strike three.
Four, the special permit decision shall be recorded at the registry of deeds. And five, any changes to the plan shall be subject to further planning board review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carrie Shirley.
Thank you very much.
You're good.
Thank you.
And I'll try to get this decision going once in a while.
Okay. Next, we have the public hearing under Part B.
Actually, it's a public meeting.
Public meeting, Part B, business. IAPB 2018- I, A, PB 2018-36, Town of Harwich Fire Department. As owner, seeks approval of a waiver of site plan for specific landscape improvements and a maintenance access drive at the corner of the East Harwich Fire Station 2. The property is identified as MAP 87 Parcel J1 and is now known as 1464 Route 39 in the C-H-1 and W-R zoning districts. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich, Section 325-55F. Chief.
Hi, I'm signing in.
Oh, you don't need to sign in.
We know you. Can you get that picture up?
Yep, that's me.
Oh, that's you.
I have that and then I blow it, I blew it up, which do you want, chief?
Oh, whatever you think, Charlene, you would know better than I, whatever works best for the board.
Yeah, I think so.
Just give you a brief overview of why I'm here before you tonight. I was approached by the foreman at the Highway Department saying that while we've decided to construct a new fire station in East Harwich on the same lot as the existing station, it would be a good time to revisit the corner. Some years ago, when the tower, the cell tower was built, there was some discussion of cleaning the corner up and putting in sort of a park, in general terms. The idea from the Highway Department was to go out and take up some scrub pines. They have a loam available, and at the time, a couple of months ago, they had had a landscaper that would hydro-seed it for us. From that, it was determined that it might be a good idea to take it maybe one step further. And we have some talent onboard already, specifically Amy Yagowski and Charlene. Were able to be very helpful in putting together a very nice plan. And this will work, it'll look very nice with the development of the new fire station. And that's why we're, I'm before you representing the town tonight. I would say, as I explained to the Board of Selectmen, this would have to be a phased project because there is no money to do this. Budgeted money. We are able to make provisions with the construction of the new fire station for irrigation down the road, whatever was chosen to do or not to do there, to be able to take care of it. That, those provisions have been made. So with that, I was educated that any changes to the property, we need to come back, and so we're, we're back.
Thank you very much. Any, any comments, Charlene?
There were absolutely no comments from any other town departments, except the Fire Department, who had no concern. The landscaping proposed for Station 2 will blend and transition nicely with this proposal. This will be a vast improvement, this is, in my opinion, to this corner. I did attend an onsite with other town staff at the location back in September. And when you look at it, kind of going off script here, when you look at it, you think, oh, those pine trees are in really nice shape. They're really not. They're actually in, most of them, majority of them are actually quite poorly, in poor shape. So it was quite clear that many of the pine trees at this location are not healthy, and if they aren't removed soon, will be falling down. The hardwoods, which are primarily oaks, are in, in nice shape, and those would be retained. At this time, there's no additional comments and no concerns.
Any comments from the planning board? David?
Chief, you mentioned that you don't have funds to complete all this right now, but I noticed you have several planning bids. The Harwich Garden Club has, takes care of Doone Park, plants there, the median at Sacquetucket Harbor. I'm sure that they would be glad to, I shouldn't say I'm sure, but I expect they would be glad to help you here, too.
They, they provide us nice flower baskets, plantings that eat both fire stations annually. So those are the types of things that we would go forward with. Tech school, for instance, would be another asset that we would approach.
They actually would plant in the planning beds and maintain it for you.
Yep, that'd be, that's, those are great ideas, that's where we would go, yep.
Joe?
Chief, why doesn't it show this coming out onto 39?
I can give...
I zoomed in, that was a zoom in that I...
I'll give you a good, I'll give you a reason for that, Joe. The reason is that if, when this went from simply grassing the corner to making it look nice to a park, the, the issue of parking came up, and it was determined that there was no public parking at the new fire station. But what we do have existing is the front ramp of the existing Station 2. When that comes down, you simply would make a saw cut, put a berm around it, and you have a pre-existing paved parking lot.
I got you. Okay.
The present plan, as approved by this board and others, would include, as it stands now, a sidewalk that would traverse the existing ramp at Station 2. And that would, we would delete that, so that you would have a parking area.
Craig? Joe, you on set?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, full disclosure, I was involved with the Fire Station 2 Planning Committee, and we did talk about this at a very high conceptual level, but it was decided at that time, and rightfully so, that it was out of scope, so I was pleased to see the chief and Link and everybody else that was involved revisiting it, especially with the idea that we can utilize some of the existing materials that the DPW already has, as you explained to the Selectmen's meeting. And I would just, so I'm very much in favor of this, I think it'll enhance the entire corner. And I know timing is a concern now, we've sort of passed the window for this year, but looking down the road in the future. And I had a couple of things I wanted to throw out for consideration, recognizing that this is, I guess I should ask for clarification, this plan that we're looking at is conceptual at this point. So certain things could change, for instance, the layout of the walkway that's there. I'm in agreement with Joe, I think it would make sense to have a walkway that goes directly into the site from the corner, from the intersection where people are going to be crossing on the crosswalk, that type of thing. So I guess that's the first thing, a clarification, is that correct?
I mean, this, this can change a little bit, we don't want to do too much more lot coverage. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I should have gone through you.
It's okay.
You know, we do need to be very cautious of the lot coverage here because it is in a water recharge area, and we're only allowed a certain amount of lot coverage. We're okay right now. You know, I don't think there would be a problem if the board, as a, you don't usually condition a waiver of site plan, but if the board felt that a, you know, from that corner to the walkway, an additional walkway was appropriate, that can be something that you incorporate into your, your decision, if you felt it, if you felt that strongly about it.
Would it have to be made as a condition of approval of the waiver that the chief is requesting? Or can it just be thrown out as a consideration for future years when we do it? And the reason I'm asking that...
You can do it a couple of different ways. One, you can say in your decision that, you know, a suggestion to have a side, you know, a walkway directly from the corner to the proposed walkway would be okay at this time or in the future, if it needed to be done.
If it, okay, to pass when the final design is done.
Something along those lines, I'm kind of thinking off the top of my head here.
Yep, okay. And the other thing that I was looking at as well is the, the drawing of the, I guess it's listed as a gravel road for access to the cell tower that winds around from the northeast side to the cell tower. And it would seem that that's taken up a lot of space, a lot of gravel, if we could just have...
Chairman, if you would, may I comment on that?
Sure.
To address that point, it's a good point. Paul Sweetser, the town engineer, was given all the...
Surveyor.
Sorry, surveyor. Was given this conceptual plan by staff. And he, he did the best he could with what was given to him verbally and maybe some quick sketches. And he did draw in that, that additional road you see coming around. That road will not be needed. In the planning of the fire station, the, the parking lot to the left of the new fire station is close enough that access to the tower is going to be okay with the crane. We will be maintaining a very small area that they presently have to get to the, to the batteries and to the generator. So that we don't, that, that will go away, that'll disappear.
Okay, I, I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. And to be very transparent about this, I am really opposed to this plan. I want, chief, it pains me to say that because I am a big fan of emergency responders in our town. But that's a microwave tower, right? There is a lot of energy coming into and out of that tower. And there are a lot of, I haven't seen any information here on the impact of having repeated and continuous exposure to that in that area, right? Because of that, and because of my experience with microwaves, and I, and I'll make it simple for everybody sitting here. If you go to a gas station and you look on the side of a pump, you'll see that they'll say, please don't use your cellphone while you're pumping gas. This is a microwave transmitter, too. And the reason they don't want you to use your cellphone or get an incoming call is because there's enough energy in this to ignite the vapors, right? It's a, it's a concern. When you have anything from 3 megahertz to 300 gigahertz in a tower like that, there is a lot of energy in and around that base. I, I'm telling you, if it, and I'm only one vote, but I am, without somebody saying, I've seen this, I've studied it, we've measured it, and I know what it is, I'm telling you, I'm, I'm definitely opposed to doing anything there, other than creating access where when trained professionals are going to repair that tower, they know what to do.
If I could comment on that, when, when the tower, and I don't have any documentation for this, so you're going to have to trust what I'm telling you. Way back when, when they decided to build that cell tower, to your, to your comments, we were concerned because you, you may be concerned about people walking around there, but I'll remind you, for the last forty-some-odd years, there's been three people in that building 24/7, 365. So if those concerns were good for people to walk the walkways, we certainly should be concerned about the people in that building. This was raised. The Fire Department specifically raised this concern, and through studies, it was shown that it will, in fact, not, is not a health hazard, certainly to the folks in the fire station. Now, I don't remember the radiuses, but I do know that the problem was, we were, we were satisfied with the facts given to the Fire Department, that, that in fact, it's not an unhealthy situation as far as the cell tower goes, for the firefighters to occupy that building every day of the year, 24 hours a day. So, to your point, I, I appreciate your concern, I'm, I'm not at all taken back by it, I appreciate your concern. But we have addressed that, and I, I don't believe that, that that tower is going to pose a health hazard to anybody that so chooses to sit there. I'm, I'm not thinking that there's going to be a whole lot of people sitting at the corner of 137 and 39. This is really a beautification. I'd also like to point out to you that in the steeple of the second congregational church is a cell tower.
Yep, right.
Now, I'm not, I'm not a religious person, but I'm thinking if the good Lord had a problem with microwaves, he would have done something about that in some shape or form. There is, it's been proven in that situation that the parishioners and the people that work in that building, it, it's safe. Again, I appreciate your concerns.
So, chief, I appreciate the points you're making, and like Ronald Reagan said to his counterpart in the Soviet Union, "Trust but verify," right?
And I can't do that right now.
Okay, so from where I sit, I can tell you that you've not said anything that's compelling enough to me to earn my vote, and I'm not going to vote for this. You, you have a group of firefighters who I think are safe because they're sitting inside a cement building, right? But to put a park with benches and everything else there, I'm sorry, I just, I, I want to see hard data because you know what, I'm a religious person, but I believe in science.
I would say that at this point, I, I understand, I don't know how the rest of the board would vote. I guess we can agree to disagree, but you, you seem to be more knowledgeable on this than I am. Except that we did raise this concern when we did put people out there. Certainly, the way I looked at this was a phasing, to phase this project. And the first phase was to walk, walk the property with, with the experts, and Charlene and Amy, identify the trees that weren't going to work out.
Yeah.
And Phase 1 was simply to remove the old trees and grass it. Phase 2 through whatever you want to call it would involve this. If you would, if it would satisfy the board, we certainly, it would be, I think it makes sense to approve Phase 1, which includes no walkways, no benches, but simply start with clearing the area, putting down some grass, and making the corner look better. And then we would come back with some verification of your concerns.
We're, we're going to agree to disagree there, too, because those trees, as awful as they look, absorb energy, right? And that's not being absorbed by anybody else. So I'm, you know, once you, once you put grass in there, then it has to be maintained. And then somebody's going to be going in there and maintaining it on a routine basis, chief, so. If I had hard facts in front of me, you'd have my vote.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you certainly did stump me on this one.
It's okay.
Mr. Chairman, please. I think that the, the site plan for the new Station 2 came before the planning board, is that correct? Was this, can we go, is there any history, can we go back to that meeting where that Station 2 was approved? And was that raised an issue? And is there any...
It was not.
It was not an issue at that time?
I, I'm not sure that I can comment on that because I don't, I'm, was I on the board then?
I honestly don't remember, but it was not even discussed.
I recall the discussion, I do not recall the...
No.
Even the cell tower being an issue that was raised.
No.
So we don't, we don't have history that we can say, we looked at this and here's the proof that it does or does not.
Oh, we have the, is the original case files from when the tower went in itself.
Well, I, I would also add, I guess to, to piggyback on what the chief said. And your point is taken that the firefighters inside the station, but also, and I don't want to steal your thunder, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a lot of activity that takes place outside of the station in terms of training and maintenance of apparatus and so on and so forth. So my guess is, the people that are going to utilize this park, maybe are going to come over from whatever the bank is on the opposite corner and maybe eat lunch and go back to work versus prolonged eight hours a day sitting underneath a cell tower.
Yeah, no, I'm, I agree with that.
The firefighters and paramedics probably have more exposure throughout a 24-hour shift than somebody that utilizes the park to walk through or, or something like that.
Yep.
Just my opinion on that.
Joe?
Mr. Chairman, I think everybody's made some pretty interesting and valid points. My instincts are that I would, I won't do it if somebody objects, would be to lay this on the table and ask the chief to take another look at it, based on what he's heard here tonight, and come back with, I, I don't want to say a better or a worse or a same or a different, but a, but a plan consistent with what he's heard from this board.
Mr. Chairman? If, if this is, though, conceptual in nature, and we, we approve it with the considerations that we've given out, is it necessary to come back again before the board?
I'm not even sure he had to come here tonight.
Yeah, he did.
He's here.
Yeah, he did.
I don't, I don't think so.
He had an approved site plan, and he was changing the site, so he had to come in, he had to come back.
So...
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Yeah, I mean, what is being requested tonight is a waiver of site plan review. I mean, and Charlene, correct me if I'm wrong, but are we within our rights to deny the waiver? And therefore, if they want to proceed, they have to come back with a full site plan review.
Yeah.
In order to be grant, in order to deny, when in the opinion of planning board, the requirements of subsection C... when in the opinion of planning board, the requirements of subsection C applicability do not substantially change the relationship of the structure to the site and to abutting properties and structures, the planning board may determine without a public hearing that submission of a site plan for special permit is not required.
Okay, so that's a may, it's not a requirement?
It's not, but if.
If it's substantially changed?
Yeah.
And changing, I would think, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, changing the location of a walkway wouldn't be considered substantial, would it?
Well, I think what, if I can, I'm going to,
Mary?
Through, I mean, one with deference to my chairperson here, there is a difference between just having open space and having a park. So I do think that's a difference. It may not be. And I don't think, I don't think there's a must on the grant of waiver. I personally don't see any harm in waiting to the next meeting if there's, to give the chairperson a little more information, if it can help him make a decision either way. I like the idea of the park, but I also understand Mr. Joyce's background and is a little more well-versed in some of these areas than I am. And I just, I don't, I don't see a problem with a couple of weeks.
I don't either. I would personally rather deal with facts. And I'd like to know what we're dealing with there, and I don't know, right? So again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this cell tower owned and operated by a single carrier or is it a consortium? Do you know, Chief?
The tower is owned by a company.
SBA.
SBA, and they lease to several carriers. And they lease the land from the town of Howard.
I'm not finished. I think the town has the right to go to that organization and ask them for definitive data about studies whether or not this does constitute a hazard or not.
Correct.
I don't think any of us are comfortable in acting on this until we get that kind of information.
Can I just ask one question through you to the chief? Chief, where it shows that the equipment compound, is all this equipment already on site?
Yes.
It is, it's just, it's just drawn on the plan.
It's there, yep.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to raise another issue for consideration. Viewing this area and what is adjacent to this area, it is a very automobile-dependent area of the town of Howard, I am not sure that there's going to be much utilization of a park because I, I mean, I drive through there on a regular basis. I don't think I've ever seen anybody walking around that part of town. Now, there probably are because I know there are sidewalks there. But I don't see that as a prime location for a park.
I would tend to agree, but I wouldn't. I mean, I am not against the park. I'm against what I think may be exposure, and I don't know, Chief. So until I know.
And let's see if we can get that information for you. Again, I just, I just want to back up a little bit. The original idea was to simply get rid of some scrub pines and put some grass down. Because of the intent years and years ago, and I'm not exactly sure how far, but when the construction of the tower went in, there was a concerted effort to try and do something with the corner.
2002.
2002, so. I, the proposal from the, and again, I don't mean to backtrack here. This is not my proposal, this is the DPW's proposal. I was the one elected to come and say it for you. So I'm happy to do that. But I will get, I think, and you know what, Mr. Chairman, we're in no hurry, we've got all winter.
Look, very respectfully, I'm asking to take a timeout here so that we can deal with some facts. I'm not opposed to anything that you're trying to do, and I wouldn't oppose the fire department or the police department. But it concerns me about that tower, right? And I'm sure that that, that station house was there long before that tower was up.
It was.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Are the memorial benches intended to honor fallen firefighters?
No. Not, that wasn't the intention that's been brought forward, no.
Charlene?
I don't know, I was actually going to make a recommendation because we don't know how long it's going to take to get information. You have to continue to date and time certain. Would be my recommendation to withdraw this without prejudice. Let us go back to the drawing board, so to speak. Get more information, perhaps revamp what we're thinking for the whole landscaping, and then, and come back to this board. We only need to get a plan in a couple of weeks before the, a meeting date. So that would be easy enough. But I would hate to have this be continued to the next meeting, and then it's, well, we don't have the information, continue it to another meeting, well, we don't have the information. So I think perhaps the cleanest way might be just to withdraw this without prejudice. We can kind of go back and look at this again and figure out what we need.
Any debate on that, any, should it have to be done in writing?
No, you can ask verbally, withdraw without prejudice.
Mr. Chairman, I request to withdraw the application at this time without prejudice.
And we would take a vote. Yeah, we need to have a motion.
On that, Mr. Chairman, would you like?
Wait, wait.
Chief?
On gathering the information, which I, I'm with you, I'm okay with that. Would you like me to do it? Do you want the town engineer to do it? I'm looking for some direction.
We'll figure this out off camera. Who needs to, they're not, no disrespect, they're not going to be able to help you with this. We need to go through and figure out what we, who we need to contact. So that's something you, I.
I have no idea.
Yeah, we, we'll figure this out, yeah. This will be a concerted.
She'll figure it out.
We'll figure this out.
We'll get help.
Move to allow withdrawal of the, wait a minute. Of the PB 2018-36 petition by the town of Howard Fire Department.
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Yeah, and I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any? No, we're good.
No, I'm in favor.
You're in favor.
Okay, how many in favor, please raise your hand? How many opposed?
None opposed, we're all good.
No.
You're opposed?
I oppose, yeah.
Okay. We'll type, we'll chat.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Okay.
Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the September 28th, 5th, 2018 meeting of the Howard Planning Board.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions carried? Next, advisory opinions, zoning board of appeals.
Catch up here.
Chairman, I've reviewed them. And I would just ask that they be placed in our record.
Discussion?
Discussion, please.
Before you, you, I handed everybody out a packet. There is one case that is going before the board of appeals. It is case number 2018-32. It's a request, this is the Outer Cape Services, they're the site that they bought. It's the old Stone Horse Motel in South Harwich. They are going before the zoning board of appeals for a use variance to allow for dormitories. Ironically, we define dormitories, we have a parking requirement for dormitories, but it's not listed anywhere else in the zoning bylaw. It's not listed as a strictly prohibited use, and it's not listed in the use table. As a, as the town planner, I am writing a letter to the zoning board of appeals. We did meet at the staff level and thought that this was an important use for the community for seasonal workers to have a safe and decent place to live. That being said, if the zoning board of appeals does approve this use special permit or this use variance, it would have to come before this board for site plan review. I leave it entirely up to you, I just wanted to give you a little overview of what they are requesting. And if the board was inclined to make any kind of comments to the zoning board of appeals, you know, that would be fine. If you feel it's not appropriate because it is going to have to come back to you, that's appropriate too. But I did want to bring this to the board's attention.
Mr. McCarley?
Charlene, my question, I guess, is what is Outer Cape Health Services doing with providing?
They're not. They are the owners of the property.
Oh, oh, okay.
So they have to be the applicants for the property.
I understand.
There is a purchase and sale agreement.
I did not know they were the owners.
For this property, yes. And Attorney Riley is serving as the representative for both entities in this case.
But they're the title holder to the property.
They are the title holder to the property.
Okay, all right. So it has nothing to do with what they're doing across.
It does not, they are just the applicant.
So Charlene, what do we have to do on this?
You don't have to do anything if you don't want to. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. You know, it's rare that there's a case before the zoning board of appeals that the planning board may have some input on if they felt. But again, this is coming, if this is approved and it gets through the appeal process, then it would have to come to this board for site plan review.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Yes, my opinion that since we may have a role in this approval, it is better that we do not make any comments at this time and allow the zoning board of appeals to act, you know, on basically their review of the project. And if they do approve, then it will come to us for site plan review and we can make our comments at that point in time.
The use will already have been approved, assuming it does, and you'll strictly have site plan review.
I have one question for Charlene though. Is assuming that, you know, zoning board of appeals approves this, is this something we should be considering with regard to potential future zoning amendments? With regard to other potential sites?
Probably, sure. That, and actually, you bring it up, and I was going to bring it up a little later. We do allow multifamily housing in this community, but it's in the high-rent districts. It's where the Belmont is. It's where the Snow Inn and those condos are. I don't know about you, but I don't honestly know anybody who can afford some of those places.
I think the J-1 students would enjoy living there.
You know, so I, you know, I do believe that there should be other places in this community where multifamily is and allow be used by special permit.
So we should just perhaps let this ride until?
And that's perfectly fine, I just wanted to, you know, bring it to the board's attention.
So unless there are any objections, my suggestion is we move along to the zoning amendment process primer?
Yep, a lot, there are some new board members on the board. So I'm going to go through this very quickly because I know time is of the essence. Zoning amendments are governed through Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5. Zoning bylaws can be sponsored or proposed by either the planning board, the zoning board, or the board of selectmen, or by petition of residents of the town. A proposed bylaw gets submitted to the board of selectmen, who is required to refer it to the planning board to begin the public hearing process within 14 days of their receipt of that. The planning board's required to hold a public hearing within 65 days of receipt. And I know you all can read, but you know, this is also for the public. Once a public hearing is scheduled, the town, the planning board must do three things. One, they must advertise the public hearing twice, no less than 14 days prior to the scheduled public hearing and no less than 10, seven days to the public hearing. And the public hearing notice must have enough information in it for somebody to have a good understanding of what the zoning amendment is and also where they can find the full text for that zoning amendment. Also, the abutting town planning boards are notified, so Dennis and Brewster and Chatham would be notified of any zoning amendments. We get notified of their zoning amendments. The Cape Cod Commission, as the regional polit, regional planning agency is notified. The Department of Housing and Community Development is notified. And any non-resident property owner who has filed a request with the town clerk and whose property lies in a district where zoning change is proposed would be notified by mail. The legal notice must also be posted in a conspicuous place here at town hall. And also, we are required to do it on the town website. Once the public hearing is held, the planning board must make a recommendation to basically the town meeting as to, do you recommend the zoning bylaw be approved or not? So that is a very quick, hopefully two-minute overview of what the zoning process is. It's confusing, people are like, well, why do you have to do this? Well, because the state says we have to, essentially.
You're not going to test this on us.
Did you put this together for us, Charlene?
I did.
This is really nice work, I appreciate that.
The sheet that you have, that I provided in the package, which is the Form 7, I actually have a different form set up for a checklist, so I check and balance myself. This Form 7 is actually something that has to get submitted to the attorney general once the zoning bylaw is approved. So this was taken from that, but I do have a quick checklist. If you look at any of the zoning articles that have happened in my tenure, either from, you know, 2001, when I was here previously, or within the last year, you will see that checklist in the front. So we make sure, I have never, ever had a zoning bylaw disapproved by the attorney general because of an administrative error. And I've been doing this for 31, I'm starting my 32nd year. I was 12 when I was, I started, so.
You were a quick study.
I was a quick study. So that is the zoning and how it works. And if anybody out there is interested in, you know, they think they may have a zoning bylaw that they might like to propose, what I always recommend to people is bring it before the planning board because the planning board may actually be the proponent of it. When we did the green communities last year, I brought it to you so that you could be the proponent of that. And by the way, that application got filed last Friday with the state to become a green community.
I think that's a great accomplishment, really. I'm so pleased, and I've seen the car plugged out, plugged in outside. I think, you know, Charlene, we're taking steps in the right direction.
Couldn't agree more, could not agree more.
Thank you. Anything else on the zoning amendment process primer? Any questions? Okay, it's 7:35.
Okay, I am not going to go deep into depth on these next ones, except maybe the sign code only because Cindy Williams, the director of the Chamber of Commerce, is here. We have had over the last couple of years a lot of concern and angst over A-frame signs. They really are not defined, so they're really not kind of permitted, but we've allowed them to be permitted, but you only get one. But it's not really spelled out clearly, but it also is supposed to be part of your overall square footage for signage. So I looked at a couple of different zoning bylaws that are out there, and I did put together our existing, we define A-frame as usually a double-phase freestanding portable sign. I'm suggesting that we change that definition to usually a double-phase freestanding portable sign made of wood, cardboard, plastic, or other lightweight or rigid material having the capacity to stand on its own supports with no moving parts or light. Because there have been some interesting variations of an A-frame sign, and they aren't always in great shape, they don't stand, they fall, et cetera. The other thing that we're suggesting at this point, and this did go to the board of selectmen because they were very interested in it because they've received a number of complaints. We've received a number of complaints. So very quickly, a sign permit would be required. The sign shall be six square feet or less with a height not exceeding three feet. The sign area, sign area, one side, oh, there's a typo, shall count towards the total allowable sign square footage for the business. So you're allowed two sides, obviously, to the sign, but only one side of it counts towards your total square footage. In most cases, that total square footage is 48 square feet. The sign may include only the name of the business, any special event, the hours of operation, or sale of a product, or price, you know, oyster is a buck kind of thing. Only one double-phase sign for business may be located on a property. A business with a street frontage on two streets may have one on each street. However, if there is a multiple business on the property, there shall be no more than one such sign allowable regardless of the frontage, and that should be for each business. So if there's a building, like the old Sword and Shield, which I'm not even sure what that's called anymore, the new name, I know it from long ago, that's got multiple businesses in there. Each one of those businesses would be allowed one, um, A-frame sign. The sign may be, may be displayed only during business hours. So if your place opens at five, you're not putting your sign out at noon. And the sign shall comply with all requirements of Section twenty-five point twenty-six, which is the area and how it's all adding together. And also violations, right now, the only violation for signs as it's printed is your sign gets picked up and you are charged ten dollars to get it back. Well, believe you me, they picked up a lot of signs this, this summer. Continual violation of the sign code, and there needs to be some more teeth into this with, with violations and fees. Very bad. I think other people had their hand up first, Joe.
That's right. Yeah, the, the question is, you, as I read this, that you have signage only on one side?
No, it would, signage would be out on both sides, but only one side would count towards the total signage for your location.
The other question is, is that many businesses want to put a sign out like a restaurant is gonna have entertainment that night. They don't open until dinner, but they wanna get the word out to everybody, but that, under the circumstances, is not allowed, is that?
Under this proposal, that would not be allowed, this is only discussion stage. You know, if people have ideas, we're also trying to stop sign pollution, quite frankly. You know, there, there was one business, I won't name names, that had up to five A-frame signs out.
Yeah, I think I know what you mean.
And that's quite excessive.
Okay.
If I could, Mr. Chair, I've got a, a couple of, um, concerns that I have. I think the most important language in this is on the property, and I think it should also say prohibited from the public way, including sidewalks.
If you look at the requirements of, um, three twenty-five, twenty-six, it says cannot be in a public way or a sidewalk.
Okay, perfect. The second, um, the second comment I just wanted to make, I believe we have a non-criminal disposition, um, bylaw here in, in Harwich, that we can issue daily tickets for violations?
Yes. Because the by, the sign code bylaw itself says ten dollars, that needs to change.
So I, I would, I personally would like to see it have a progressive and a daily. So under, under forty twenty-one D, when you've adopted the non-criminal disposition, you can have progressives. And they, they're, they're strictly penalties, not fines. They're enforced within the town, and to me, this is something that would, that should at least be, you know, a fifty-hundred-
And which section, would, say that section?
So it's Master and Law, Chapter forty, Section twenty-one D. It's the, the way that, um, cities and towns can decriminalize their, their ordinances and bylaws to write, issue tickets.
I, I don't know if the town has adopted that.
So I would think we probably have, um, but I would, and if not, then I would still think this is a, a good one to do that on, where, um, the means of enforcement would be to allow the, the enforcing officer the right to, to issue a daily ticket.
Yep.
Because unless, and until people start getting daily tickets and they, these not, these fines start adding up, the abuse is gonna continue.
Almost like progressive disciplinary action.
Exactly.
Yeah, one other question, I think the, uh, the concern I have is that lightweight signs can be thrown into the street or into people by the wind. Should there be a provision that it shall be anchored to prevent that?
Interesting you bring that up, that was discussed. One of the concerns we had with them being anchored, if it's a chain tethered to a post, now people are gonna be tripping over the chain.
No, I understand-
Yeah.
That there are a lot of ways to anchor, and they're-
There are, I mean-
Useless and, and functional ways.
Right, well, I mean, the, the thing that we all thought of at the staff level was, um, you know, if there's a cord or some kinda mechanism between the, the lower parts of the sign, put a sandbag on top of it. So it can't move, you know, on that, inside the, you know, inside this part of the A-frame.
Over, over the chain.
Right, right.
Yeah, by definition, that's an anchor, right?
Yeah.
Well, at least held in place some way.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I just really have one question. And that is, how would this ordinance affect the signs for the Mariners games that are all over town?
Those are treated differently.
Okay.
Those fall under a temporary sign, and those are, those are treated differently, and it's also a not-for-profit.
Yeah, so that would not be, so it wouldn't be affected at all by this?
Right.
And the same, I would guess, would apply to the band in the summer?
Exactly, yeah. Yep, those-
Mr. McCarland?
Town-sponsored things, although the Mariners aren't, but they're a not-for-profit, town-sponsored events fall under a different category.
Charlene, is it, is it, the, the proposal that the building inspector would enforce this?
The building inspector now enforces the sign code, and right now, he really has no en, he has, I shouldn't say has no enforcement power, but the language is so quirky that it's been very difficult for him.
Do you have any, any thoughts as to, because I know what his workload is, or what that office's workload is? Any thoughts as to who else, like the police department, or do we have any thoughts as to who else might enforce it, other than the building inspector?
Well, actually, right now, I mean, this past summer, um, the Assistant Building Inspector, um, Ken Murphy, he would go out two or three times a week this summer, and if he saw signs that were not in compliance, he'd pick them up. So it's, it's the summer months that are the problem child, quite honestly, for a lot of things.
Did Mr. Murphy run into any sort of resistance or pushback, or-
Uh, yes, sir, he did.
Confrontation?
Yes, sir, he did.
And then, did the police department then?
That, I don't know. I honestly don't know what steps were taken.
All right. Charlene, is this, or, Mr. Chairman, is this something that will, um, once it's ready and it's final draft, uh, require a public meeting, a public hearing?
We just went over that on the primer.
Yeah.
So, if the planning board proposes this bylaw, and I want there to be a lot of discussion before we go to the public hearing part of this, and also, it would be my recommendation that we get, um, council, zoning council opinions on these before we advertise them, and before this board makes a final decision.
Good idea.
Yes.
I think that's a very-
Too, too many times, we do it after the fact, and it's like, ah! So, yes. So there would be a public hearing process. Yep.
And do you want, as we go through this, do you want us to provide, provide feedback?
Absolutely. If, if, in reviewing this stuff, like I said, we're not gonna go into too much detail, and I have five minutes. You know, if there are things that you all see, definitely get them to me.
Okay.
Uh, you know, you have these now, we'll talk about them at the next meeting, but I do, you know, quickly, just wanna say, do very quickly, height, building height in the floodplain, right now, if an elev, if a building needs to be elevated to satisfy flood requirements, and it's over the height limitation, it has to go for variance. We're proposing language that would ease that, so that if there is an existing building, it could be done by right, rather than special permit.
To, to a certain, with, still within a certain height, as we discussed at last meeting.
Right, and this language is taken directly from, um, New Jersey, which actually came up with language statewide. And the town of Dennis enacted this language, and they actually added some language to correct some things New Jersey realized that it didn't cover. And here's just a photograph that, you know, of-
Must've been after Sandy.
After Sandy. I kinda put it in there for effect. So this is one of the ones that we really need to, to look at. The zoning board of appeals has approved every single one that's gone through, but it's a time and money situation. And, and you do have a couple of questions to your-
I, I have that.
Yeah.
Thank you, I, I'll make it quick. I have sort of two comments on this. One, I think is purely editorial, in the second paragraph, the one that says to see if the town will vote, in the last sentence, it says by adding new, for new definitions, I think there's an extra word in there.
Oh, all right, yeah, that's-
Okay, and then the other one may be a little bit more substantive in the definition for existing structure. It says prior to the catastrophic event. I mean, I'm not sure that, I mean, the, the event that we're talking about is the changing in the floodplain map.
If, it, no, actually, the catastrophic event is if a hurricane Sandy comes in and takes out eight feet of sand, and now your house is now that much higher. You know, if, if an event takes place that makes you need to raise your house up.
Hundred-year storm.
So it's what your original elevation was, and for ninety-five percent of the buildings, we have that now, in part because of the septic plans and that kinda thing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else on that, Charlene?
No. The others for retaining walls, I have another thought on this, um, that I'd like to bring forward, and I'll get to you all for discussion the next time. Right now, we have septic systems that are requiring to be mounded, and they need retaining walls. Under our definition of structure, retaining wall is a structure, it needs to meet setbacks. Those are all having to go to the zoning board of appeals. That's crazy. If, if you need a septic system, you need a septic system, and you shouldn't need relief from zoning to be able to get your septic system in. And then, uh, the other is accessory apartments. We can go into that more the next, the next meeting.
Is there-
And I did share with you in your packet here, a copy of what the town of Brewster is doing. I also gave you a copy of how Dennis defined structure, and they specifically exempt retaining walls. So that may be another way to do the retaining wall thing.
Is it, on that example that you gave, wouldn't the setbacks that are required for the system, uh, septic system be adequate?
Not necessarily. A lot of times, if you have to do a mounded septic system, you get a variance from the setback for, from the, from the, um, lot line. So we're seeing, because of, uh, uh, you know, water table issues and wetland issues, and a variety of other issues. If you have an existing house or even a new house, and the only place you can get your septic system is in this corner over here.
So you've gotta go before-
Exactly. You have to go to the board of health.
Okay.
To me, they're the ones that should be, you know.
Charlene, I noticed that you cited sources for some of the definitions. Have you also looked at some of the national associations, like American Planning Association, American Society of Civil Engineers and those? They often have committees that create-
I reached out to all the planners on the, on, um, in Massachusetts through the Mass. Planners List Serve, um, for a variety of these. I was like, wow, really? Some of them, I was not overly impressed with. When I got the information from Dennis that they used, that, I was like, well, this is exactly what we're looking for, for the height issue. You know, I think it's a, it's a well-written, um, I think they fixed the, the problems that, um, New Jersey had, that they realized after the fact. So, and there'll be more, I'll have, I'll have some more. So the next meeting, there'll be more conversation.
Okay, so we're at the, we're at one minute-
We're at the witching hour.
We're at one minute past the target, and-
You do please need to vote on the schedule for next year.
Move to approve the schedule for two nineteen?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And just a reminder that you do have a joint meeting with the board of selectmen on the fifth. I think you're also doing your annual report to them that night. I'll have to find out. But you're talking about accessory apartments and expanding zoning for the Route twenty-eight downtown retail. In the back of the packet I gave you is a memo I prepared for Chris with a map, and that's all I have to say tonight.
Okay, any, any, uh, any old business? Any briefings and reports by board members? Do we have a motion to-
Uh, move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.